Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our September 25th, 2017 City Council Work Session. The time now is 6:02. First item on the agenda is to discuss our Animal Advisory Board. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Mr. Watkins, I don't know if you wanted to give, wanted me to give a brief introduction to this, or if you just wanted to jump into it? You didn't hear me?
Mr. Watkins? Bob?
Did you want me to give a brief introduction to this, Mr. Watkins, and then you can pick it up, or did you just want to take it from the beginning? Okay, each of you have a proposed revision to the ordinance that was sitting at your place there that basically give you a little bit of history of the Animal Advisory Committee. It's a, it's a state mandated committee that we have, and there's four positions that the state mandates. One is a licensed veterinarian, one is a county or municipal official, one is someone whose duties include daily operation of an animal shelter, and one is a representative from an animal welfare organization. Our, our specific ordinance addresses those four positions and also has another position, which is a citizen of Halton City that we put on there. Councilmember Watkins discussed with Wayne and I making a revision to the ordinance to add another member to that committee. And that committee would be, that committee member would be an alternate that would vote in the absence of another committee member if they were voting on something. Mr. Watkins, is there anything else you want me to touch on, or does that pretty much sum it up?
Yes, it, it, when you haven't got but five members on your board, it's real, or committee, it's real easy to have, not have a quorum. It's happened, over the years, it's happened several times, it's only happened a couple of times in the last three years, but I just, I think, I think it's good to have one more person there, and that, excuse me, it'd be like the plan, it'd be like the zoning board of adjustment, we've got nine members, only seven of them vote, and it's, it'll be the same way. They'll be able to, uh, to discuss, but they can't vote unless there's one somebody absent. And Wayne, I didn't, I didn't get time to read this, did we, did we say anything about open meetings, something anywhere?
Well, it's a pretty simple ordinance, what it provides. Right now, as Keith pointed out, you've got a five-member board. By state law, you're required to have four qualified members, but the size of the board can be whatever you want to make it. You've chosen to make it five members. And the fifth member that Halton City has on the board is a citizen of Halton City. All the others have special qualifications that they're required to meet, but they're not required to be citizens. What we've done in this ordinance is, if you look at, on page two, under section two dash one forty-four, really the key is the very last sentence on there, that, that number two, the fifth regular member and the one alternate member shall be citizens of the city. So, we've got an alternate member, and the next item that we change is on page three at the very top, that paragraph C, it says, "In the event a regular member is absent from or has a conflict of interest during a meeting of the committee, the chairman shall select the alternate to sit in the regular member's absence." So, if you don't have a full quorum of, or if you don't have a full board of five, then the chairman would designate the alternate member to sit, so that you would have at lea- you would have your five members, or four members, or three members, three is a quorum of this committee. This is completely discretionary with the City Council, you can have an alternate member or not, you can make the committee whatever number of members you want to, but because you have an animal shelter, you have to have this committee, and four of those members have to meet the qualifications set forth in the statute. Beyond that, you have a lot of discretion on how you want to set up this committee.
Thank you, Wayne.
Well, my, my question was, is the other thing I requested is something like our speak visitors and citizens, so that there could be a discussion after the meeting where it can't be voted on, I mean, it's not something, it's not an action item.
That, that would be something that could just be placed on the agenda of the Animal Committee if that was deemed appropriate.
Okay, 'cause we've alre- excuse me, we've already met, and we're, we've changed, the mayor has been addressing, he and at least one other person's have been addressing it for a real long time about having the meetings in the municipal, so we're going, and having them in the evening like everybody else. We, we set some dates, but we're trying to work around, make sure it's not on a Monday or a Tuesday, so that the council or the planning zoning or none of it gets in the way. We'll meet four times a year here, six or six-thirty, I don't know, it'll still be determined, but we, we've already, we've already voted on that.
So, Bob, what you're asking is whether the council wants to put a requirement or a provision that authorizes a visitor's citizens form at the Animal Advisory Committee meeting, allow citizens to speak about issues involving the shelter.
Right, and it's, it would be just like, just like the visitor and citizen things here. If it's not on the agenda, well, they don't, there's no discussion on it amongst the board. And I picked that up, both of those things, I picked up at the Richmond Hills Advisory Committee. They had an alternate, and they had visitors and citizens, and they had, four or five people got up and spoke, and one of them asked, or something they said wasn't exactly what it should have been, and so if somebody on the committee says, "We, we don't vote on this," or discuss it, so they, they didn't get to talk anymore. And I don't look, I don't look for a whole lot of people to do that, I just, I think, I think it's better than what, the next best thing, and which is some, the wa- the way the meetings have been being, is that when the meeting's over, you're, you know, you're sitting there eating, and they'll tell you what you're discussing, or who's there, or whatever, and I just think it ought to be all under, all, so it can be contained.
I think, Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but you don't need council action to put a visitor's citizens form on their agenda, right?
You don't need that. I, I think the Animal Advisory Committee needs to be mindful, however, that unlike the City Council, which is a public forum for all the citizens on any business of the city, the Animal Advisory Committee is given very limited role by statute and by ordinance, and therefore the visitor's citizens form needs to be a limited form, just on matters involving that board. We don't, we don't want to have something where citizens come up and talk about issues that aren't related to that board's jurisdiction.
Right, right.
With the City Council, it's different, because you have purview over everything at the city, so citizens might bring up any particular topic under your visitor's citizens form, but as long as the Animal Advisory Committee limited the, the public forum, the matters within their jurisdiction, I think you can do that, if the council's comfortable with them doing that. We don't need it in the ordinance, but it might be a good topic of discussion tonight. If, if you're not comfortable with that committee doing that, then you might let us know tonight what we're talking about, and otherwise, that can just be posted on the agenda by the chairman.
So, Mr. City Manager, are you just needing a directive tonight from the?
Yes, sir, just, the proposed ordinance is, was written by Wayne, just need to know if that's, if, if you want to make any revisions to this, and what we'll do is we'll put it on the regular agenda next time to vote on, but we just needed to know if this ordinance was satisfactory to Mr. Watkins and the rest of the council, unless y'all wanted to talk about or make any revisions to it.
I have a question. I don't have my information in front of me. Councilmember Watkins, how many times has this been an issue for not having the, the fifth member on there, and that board wasn't able to take any action?
Well, it, excuse me, it's, it, it actually seems like more because of the fact you only made three times a year, but the meeting, the last meeting we had, we had to move it twice, because there wasn't going to be a quorum. And, and over the years, when I first got on, it was, seemed like nobody knew who was supposed to call anybody, so, so Dr. Anderson didn't know there was a meeting, and so we've, gotten all that settled out. It was like, you know, you, and we've had, we had a problem out, out in the zoning board adjustment off and on over the years, just because somebody would call and leave word. If you don't get the word, you don't know there's a meeting, or you're, or know to say you're, are not going to be there. But it's, it's, I, I just think it's for the better.
Who, who is responsible on that board for scheduling the meetings and ensuring that everybody is aware of the next meeting date?
Well, as I say, we, we set tentatively, so we, and I haven't got it in front of me, we'd set tentatively the dates of the four meetings we're going to have, and the times and the place, tentatively. That's it, the first, because we didn't know how all this was going to go, and then it's not, it's not as, it was a little, little harder when we were having our meetings at Hopper, 'cause you had to tell them almost a month out, and this last time, I squeezed in there, and, 'cause we'd already put it off twice, and talked them into letting us have it, and I said, you know, "We're going to start meeting at City Hall," so.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nunn?
Thank you. So, really, this is just about having one alternate person, right? Okay. And with the same qualifications as the regular member? Okay. Do we already ha- we already have a board, correct? And, and when is that due to be?
I think it's about, has to do with the same as the mayor.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of reappointing them.
Okay, can we make nominations now, or we just have to wait until then, or?
No, I mean, what we would do is, we, they're appointed by the mayor, of course, anybody can make a recommendation, and if, I guess if this passes, of course, they'll have to come back in the form of an, a resolution, which we don't have yet, it'll be the next council meeting or the one in, in October.
It'll be an ordinance, so it'll take two readings, so this ordinance won't be effective until your second meeting in October, if you want to move forward with it.
At, at that time, then we would, okay.
Make any recommendations?
I thought the city coun- the city council doesn't appoint the members?
City council appoints them, they're all at-large members.
Okay, all right. And then, so we have another time to do that? We do?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I'd really like Mr. Watkins to stay on as the council person. But now's not the time to do that?
I mean, we can do it, it's not, it's not posted on the, the agenda for that, but for the council liaisons, council contacts?
Yeah, to continue.
Absolutely, we can have it on the next, the first meeting in October.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Watkins, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes, I did. It does make a whole lot of difference to me, except that we're, I can't remember when the, when the, when the first meeting's going to be, but one thing hasn't got anything to do with the other, but not, we're, I don't think that we ought to be nominating the alternate, but that hasn't got anything to do with nominating the people for the board, or for the committee, excuse me, it used to be a board, it's a committee, Animal Advisory Committee, correct?
Correct.
So, there's absolutely nothing to keep from nominating committee members tonight.
Okay, with that being said, so what is the thoughts from the City Council? Are you in favor of this, adding another, a fifth member to this board, or committee, I should say? Ms. Nunn, you're, are you in favor of that?
I'm sorry, I was talking to.
Sorry. So, what we're needing is just a directive, if everyone's in favor of adding the fifth member, which would be an alternate to this committee?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Groward? Mr. Fr- okay, so there's three. Obviously, Mr. Watkins is in favor of it, Mr. Brown, and, okay, so you have the, you have a directive, okay. Moving on to the Veterans Memorial Committee updates, Ms. Kristy Pritz. Welcome.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Got a PowerPoint. Just want to show y'all, if you have not been by Veterans Memorial, it is moving very quickly. It is super exciting now, we are actually seeing this come to pass, so just wanted to share some pictures, as you see before, this is what it looked like. This is just the beginning, getting that dirt moving. You can see the forms going up for the arch there, pretty large in scale, next to the workers that were next to them. This was just a few weeks ago, actually, this was just Friday, where they were pouring the border around the actual rectangle where the plaza will be, you can see where the fountain's going to go in the center, right there, and then the forms for the arches again back here. This is going to be the thirty-foot arch, about three stories high. And you can see now, they've started the block for the arch, it will not be cinder block, it will be covered, just so you know. And we did finally get our fountain in, that is in our possession, we're going to get cleaned up, shined up real nice to go into the future home of the fountain, and you can see now it's taken shape, they have filled up the, built the fountain walls, they have the red border going around, the arch walls are being formed up nice and neat for us. So, those are the pictures, so you can see progress, I encourage all of you to go by on a regular basis, as it is moving very quickly. The main thing to come visit with you tonight about is we are getting very quickly, it's quickly approaching for grand opening on November eleventh. We did want to bring to the council what the plans are as a committee, what we've been discussing, and also get your feedback and input. Of course, we have Halton High School Jazz Band confirmed, it will be very similar to the setup we had at the site dedication, the very first ceremony that we did out there, if you recall. They played some great music for us, military music, we have someone confirmed to sing the National Anthem, someone will sing American, the Beautiful, we'll have Chaplain Steve Van Zant do a prayer for us, we'll have the presentation, the colors from the American Legion, we are working on guest speakers, trying to get some nice military speakers to come out and, and give a nice speech for us to kick off the opening of that. We will also have a ribbon-cutting ceremony with the chamber, and then we will kick off the fun side of it, so we'll have our nice solemn, reverent opening of the facility, reflection time, and then we will have a party. So, kids' activities, bounce houses, food trucks, and live music. So, we anticipate a very minimal cost to the city on this event, the majority of our speakers, our musicians, will all be free of, free of charge to us, there may be a few little things, porta-potties, stages, that kind of stuff that we would rent, but for the most part, the majority of our folks are going to be donating their services and/or time. Is there any feedback we'd like to know as a committee, what we can do, if you have input, council, that you would like to see at this event, or ideas, or is this looking good, shaping up for you?
Is, Dr. Tron?
I have two questions. I saw the fountain, you know, because I'm pretty good on the water fountain, I have one at home. Are they paired a concrete over the sprinkler, or, I mean, the fountain?
Yes, it, it has a, we don't have a picture of that part of it, it has
Right there, yeah.
Has a granite base that will go in the bottom, that that fountain will sit on top of and actually spins, it's a rolling sphere.
But what is the lifetime of this one?
The lifetime, that is granite, it is solid granite, too.
Yeah, I know, but what happened? Is something wrong with the water system? How do you fix them? You have to break them or what?
David Cummings has that all worked out. He has it set up, he's a pool guy amongst, he's just jack-of-all-trades, our
Okay, that's only one thing I worry about.
He has it set up with pumps and everything.
It looks good, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have a pump house that will actually come off from that.
And my second question, how the memorial fund going, like, what are we standing now?
We, I have not looked at it recently, from the fundraiser, I bet we're, we're getting real close to the ten thousand mark. I just did a deposit for almost six thousand dollars, so we're sitting very pretty at that.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Tell me again how much the fundraiser brought in?
The deposit I made was around six thousand, but that didn't include all of it, I think we probably brought in close to ten on this fundraiser.
That's what I was thinking, okay, thank you.
Well, what we can do is far, because this is just presented to us tonight, the council, they can certainly, you know, send their feedback to you, or to our city manager to you, on anything that they would like to see, or suggestions they would have for the September, no, November eleventh at eleven AM. So, any ideas y'all may have, any suggestions you'll have, just funnel those over to Kristy, and she'll send them back and to the committee, and we'll get those implemented. Fantastic presentation, thank you.
I have one more thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Almost done, I gave you the good news, so I'm going to finish with the, the little hiccup. Budget is always an issue, as you know, as previously, previously discussed, this being a unique project on a large scale and a tight timeline, we want it to last for decades, we're looking at a fifty-year time span at a minimum with, with all the product we're doing. With that being said, we discussed last meeting about the upgrade on the electrical, we went from a sixty-amp service, which was included in the package, the bid package, we chose to go to a two-hundred-amp service to make sure that we can supply the needs for the next fifty years, we're looking at holding large concerts, large events there, we want to be able to hook up sound systems that are not just my little rolling box that I bring out, but have the stage, have the proper lighting, have the proper sound systems. So, we did, in fact, choose to upgrade to that two-hundred-amp service, it does require a significant amount, amount more than what a sixty-amp service would be requiring, so the cost did go up. We also chose the, to follow the own rules that we hold our citizens accountable for when they present business plans or construction plans to the city, we require signed and sealed structured engineer drawings, and those do have to be signed and sealed and stamped by the engineers, we chose to also have that as part of our project, and it is a cost that we did not anticipate, so that has increased, we, we have about a, about a ten-to-fifteen-thousand-dollar overage what we did have, but as I just said, we, we had probably raised close to ten thousand on the fundraiser, so we feel confident that's not going to be something we're going to have to dip too far into the budget on, but I did want to make the council aware that that was happening. We, we're pretty close, I think that, that's pretty much it, is what the contractor has said in our last construction meeting.
Any questions or comments from the council regarding that? None? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, we appreciate y'all's support.
Fantastic, thank you. So, moving right along, we'll also ask Ms. Feng, if she'll come up and provide us with the monthly financial report. Welcome.
Mayor and the City Council, it's a pleasure to present to you the August financial. Let's see if I can get to work. Here we go. Okay, I am happy to say that all the funds are performing as budgeted. At the end of August, you can see that the total revenue for the city is about sixty-six-point-four million dollars, and the expenditure is about fifty-six-point-four million dollars, which is about ninety-three percent of the revenue and seventy percent of the expenditure, and our fund balance right now is standing at forty million dollars. And we budgeted that, at the end of the year, we're supposed to have only twenty-three million dollars, so we still have another month to go. Okay, looking at the largest fund, the general fund, you can see total revenue about twenty-six million dollars for the year, which is about ninety-seven percent, and expenditure about twenty-two-point-eight million dollars, which is about eighty-five percent, and our fund balance for the general fund is about nine-point-five million dollars. Looking at the largest revenue, public tax, you can see that we are following the budget, and the total revenue we receive for general fund from public tax is about eight-point-four million dollars, that is to say, we collect about over ninety-nine percent of the public tax revenue. As for sales tax, again, it's a good news for the city, sales tax went up a lot, the total we receive for general fund is about eight-point-six million dollars, right now we are at ninety-eight percent of the budget. Okay, comparing the previous three years, you can see this year's is much higher, it's due to two factors, one is the allocation is more, and the other one is that we really have higher sales revenue for the city. So, this will give you a comparison with the other cities, Halton City, it seems that the percentage rise, we are at nine-point-two percent more than the previous year for the month of August, and from January to August, we are about ten-point-eight percent higher than the previous year, so it's just the good news for the city, and hopefully this trend will continue. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Feng. Are there any questions from the council for Ms. Feng? Seeing none, excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move into executive session pursuant to five fifty-one, oh seven-one, oh seven-two, and oh seven-four, the Texas Government Code at six twenty-five. We will now move into executive session pursuant to 551, 071, 072, and 074 of the Texas Government Code at 6:25.
The time now is seven oh eight. First item on the agenda is the invocation of pledge of allegiance by council member Janine Nun. If you would please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day, for our community and for our freedom. We thank you for your promise to be with us always. I thank you that your presence is here with us right now. Tonight we give you our hearts, our minds, and our lives. We pray that you will deepen our comprehension, broaden our thinking, and transform our understanding of what comes before this council. You are our counselor, teacher, and friend. We must strive to always make the perfect decisions for the well-being of our community. We pray for those suffering in unfathomable ways, our Houston, Florida, Mexico, and Puerto Rico friends. Please provide them with the courage, strength, and hope to overcome their displacements and to begin rebuilding with determination. We pray for all the victims of these recent disasters and the first responders and volunteers who continue to give their all. Please watch over, guide, and protect Halton City's first responders and staff. Guide our managers and department heads as they lead our city. We pray for our military and our nation's leaders. They need your wisdom and guidance as never before against enemies with no moral compass and no respect for human life. Again, thank you, Lord, for all that you do. I pray this in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Let me just give the flag to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, council member Nun. If you're looking at the, uh, the agenda, we've already had the report, uh, the financial report presented to us in the, uh, in the workshop. So now we're moving on to the announcements by our city secretary, Art Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. Announcements for September twenty-fifth. Parks and Recreation, we're asked to join the Keep Halton City Beautiful on Saturday, September thirtieth, from nine thirty to one P M. For the Trinity Trash Bash at Lake, at Little Fossil Park. Online registration is available at the city website. The Halton City Fire Department will be having an open house on Saturday, October fourteenth, from ten A M. to one P M. Activities will include a kids' safety house and mini-fire engine rides, a Jaws of Life demonstration, hands-only CPR training, fire extinguisher demonstrations, refreshments, and giveaways. In community projects, everyone is invited to join the Health Fiesta on Saturday, September thirtieth, from ten thirty A M. to two P M. At the Bethesda Community Church. This family event will offer mammograms, flu vaccines, medical screenings for diabetes, colon cancer, dental, and vision screenings, all for free. Food items and winter coats for children, while supplies last, will be there, so get there early. Live Tobacco Free is sponsored by the Tarrant County Health, uh, Public Health, and they're offering a four, a free four-week tobacco cessation program in Halton City beginning Tuesday, October second. Classes will be at the rec center from six P M. to eight P M. The class size is limited, and you must pre-register, and more details are available on the city website. The Halton Halloween is Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from two to five P M. at the Halton City Rec Center. They'll have bounce houses, obstacle courses, face painting, crafts, and more, which will keep the whole family entertained for the Halloween fun. The costume contests are for ages two to ten, and it begins at three thirty P M. The rec center is also asking for donations of individually wrapped, non-melting candy to help fill up the bags we give to all children at the event. Anyone donating at least two bags of candy will be entered into a drawing to win a fifty-dollar Recreation Center gift certificate. All donations are needed by October twenty-first, and I thank you for your help. The Halton Senior Center, uh, will have a visit from the Carter Eye Center. They'll be there on Thursday, October twelfth, from ten A M. to one P M. to conduct vision, vision screenings for seniors. The Aging Mastery Program will be holding classes every Tuesday from twelve-thirty to one forty-five P M. Starting October third through December fifteenth, and it encourages mastery, which is developing behaviors that lead to improved health, stronger financial security, and overall well-being. Limited spots are available, and donations are appreciated. Public Library, the teen programs, the family movie night, adult GED classes, and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for their dates and times. In addition, the library will be closed for staff training on Friday, October thirteenth, and the Annual Howling Halloween will be held Monday, October thirtieth. And right now, friends of the Halton City Public Library wish to make an announcement regarding a fundraiser at Applebee's. Leslie? A body?
I don't want you to think I'm infamous that I have to have an escort. We're just a bunch of friends of the Halton City Public Library, and you know how much activities that we have going on. But the Friends will be celebrating the week of October the sixteenth through the twenty-first. The Friends of the National Friends of the Library Week, and the Friends have every day something different planned. Leslie does a fabulous job of keeping things going all the time, and we're trying to continue and have that. As, um, our city secretary announced out, we are going to have a fundraiser, and that's why this nice officer, Flack, is here to escort me. We are going to thank you by awarding you a ticket to our breakfast. Jose again has graciously consented to put on us a nice buffet on the twenty-first, which will culminate the National Friends Week. So I came in with a box. He opened it, he looked at it, he bit it, and he's going to do the drawing, because I didn't want to say that there was any partiality or anything with the things. And he has tickets, and as runner-up prizes, we have bookmarks for all of you. So Officer Flack? Now I'll let you read it.
Janine Nun.
Good. Janine is one of our supporters of our library, as all of you are. Uh, I do want to say one other thing, though, and that is, we want to thank you all for your support that you have given the library. You have supported us in many things. Thank you again on the fundraiser. You're allowing us to use the credit cards and everything, so our patrons can go ahead and, and charge their tickets and everything. And I'm sure people will be coming to get tickets. I do have one other thing I'd like to say on a serious note, and that is, when you see a book, sometimes you all, I know how busy you are, you've got so much time, and you just throw up your hands and say, I'm so tired of this mess. I don't want to fool with it. I want to get away from it all. And you see a book laying there, and you pick it up. Remember, it's not a bunch of printed pa- words on page. Think about it. It's history, romance, mystery, anything you want it to be, travel. It's what you put your mind that you wish it to be, but the only way that you can do it and make it come alive is to pick it up and open it up and read. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to confirm that date, you said that was October twenty-one?
Twenty-first, yes.
Twenty-one, October twenty-one.
But thank you for the presentation.
Try to hold it down.
So, moving on to our regular agenda, uh, the agenda item number two, consideration and/or action regarding the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, we are in line for a motion. Who is that? Uh, council member Watkins?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval. Is there a second? Uh, council member Nun?
I will second that.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have a motion for approval in a second. If you would please signify your votes. Motion, motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, moving on to agenda item number three, which is ordinance number O dash two oh one seven dash O twenty-two dash one five. Ms. Bachelor, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Bonnie's a hard act to follow now. Get past Ms. Jennifer's slides here. Get past Ms. Jennifer's slides here. Yep. All right, let's get to Mr. Carmolies. There we go.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Try to hold it down.
So, moving on to our regular agenda, uh, the agenda item number two, consideration and/or action regarding the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, we are in line for a motion. Who is that? Uh, council member Watkins?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval. Is there a second? Uh, council member Nun?
I will second that.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have a motion for approval in a second. If you would please signify your votes. Motion, motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, moving on to agenda item number three, which is ordinance number O dash two oh one seven dash O twenty-two dash one five. Ms. Bachelor, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Bonnie's a hard act to follow now. Get past Ms. Jennifer's slides here. There we go. Yep. All right, let's get to Mr. Carmolies. There we go. That'll work. All right, this is the, um, second reading for fifty-one twenty-six Broadway. They're not in order, unfortunately. There we go. This is the second reading for, um, conditional use zero one 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 seven. On September the eleventh, council approved ordinance number O twenty seventeen, O two two fifteen by a vote of five zero. This is to conduct a public hearing and consider action on the application of David Barber on behalf of Al Rita Properties Corporation requesting approval of a conditional use permit for office warehouse and contractor's office with shop and garage. Uses in the C-three commercial district located on West hundred and twenty-six point five feet of lots one, two, and three, block thirty-two, Meadow Oaks Edition Halton, being approximately zero point seven three acres south of Broadway, east of Halton Road, and west of Rita, having the approximate address of fifty-one twenty-six Broadway, units A through N. The applicant requests approval of the conditional use permit for an existing multi-tenant building at fifty-one twenty-six Broadway in order to bring existing uses into zoning conformance. The site's existing C-three zoning requires approval of the conditional use permit for the proposed uses. The multi-tenant building currently has the following occupancy. E-commerce retail, electrical contractors, H V A C contractors, hobby shop for antique vehicle, lawnmower repair, office warehouse for part sales, personal storage, storage warehouse, swimming pool service company, window tinning truck accessories, and vacant tenant spaces. On August the twenty-second, P and Z recommended approval by a vote of five zero with the following stipulations. Remove the automobile and light truck repair shop use and modify exhibit A to include except operational company vehicles, and these changes have been made to the ordinance. Uh, David Barber is here representing the property owner, and he has some updates on the property, unless you have some questions of me.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Does anybody have any questions, uh, for, uh, Ms. Bachelor? Uh, council member Fowler? You're, I think you're on. There you go.
Ms. Bachelor, the, uh, the recommendations that were made, the two stipulations, were, was that considered in the, in the mo- in the motion from last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, if you want-
So the motion passed five oh, including those?
Including those, yes. And I'll go through these pictures, and David can update y'all on what they've already started to do over there.
Okay, thank you.
So they will be repairing the dumpster enclosure. The striping, he said he's already had that done. They're proposing a monument sign, uh, for the, for the business park. So the, um, Andy's mower, those signs will be gone. Of course, the mailboxes will remain. Uh, believe they'll be putting in landscaping, but David can answer that. And it's just the A through N, so just that, uh, north-south building on the east side of the property. As shown right there in yellow. David, if you'll come up and address council.
Mr. Mayor, one other quick question.
Sure thing.
If you don't mind. Since this triggers it, will this require sprinkling?
No, not at this point, because they're not adding on to the footprint of the building.
Okay, so there's no, no requirement to sprinkle or-
No, if there was change of use of the whole structure, it would, but, um, it hasn't been abandoned on the use.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before the applicant comes up, let me ask Mr. Dr. Trong, did you have a question for Glenna or for the applicant? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, when you, uh, mentioned about storing the warehouse, whatever, what, what do they use to store it? The-
Typically, most of them are mom-and-pop type, um, contractors, and there will be no outdoor storage. It'll all just be contained inside. It's basically a overhead door and a walk door, so they're single, uh, tenant uses.
And the second question, I saw a bunch of, uh, vehicle parked in front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how they normally use to park the vehicle overnight, or what?
The parking, um, is here along the west property line, and they'll be putting curb stops there, but you're saying as far as in front of the building?
Yeah, I mean, uh, you go another picture. Yeah, this one, I, yeah. This are usually empty like this at night, or what?
Pretty much, there's-
After the asphalt is special, you condition, and, uh, I want to make sure that no, you know, that vehicle or some bad vehicle.
There will be no automotive, uh, repairs, so there shouldn't be any vehicles overnight unless it's like a company vehicle of the contractor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions from the council for Ms. Bachelor?
I have one other question, Ms. Bachelor. Do you mind bringing that slide up where you did a front view of it? Right, well, you could go to that one, either one. See the, the signage that's above the overhead door?
Yes, sir.
Um, I know our signed Board of Appeals, and you're more clear on this than myself, but w- does that allow for that signage? Or do, you know, I, I want to help the applicant, but I want to make sure that if they need to go to the signed Board of Appeals, or if it needs to be removed, and since they're doing a marquee, or a, you know-
Monument sign.
Monument sign. Um, just to make sure, you know, I want to clear all these things up, that way everything, we, we don't miss anything and make sure we help them, but yet we're, we're getting all this stuff straightened out.
Sure, they're allowed twenty percent of an attached sign minus doors and windows. So like this tenant space here, uh, they have two facade areas, but it is limited to twenty percent. So anything above that would have to go to the S B A.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. You said the applicant is here?
He is.
Okay, fantastic.
I guess we'll give his name.
And sir, if you would, just state your name for the record.
Uh, my name's David Barber with Formation Real Estate, representing Alrito Properties. I'd thank Ms. Bachelor for her guidance through this process. When we purchased the property last April, the goal was to take it to a traditional office warehouse. In P and Z, they added some things in the design standards, which allows me to go to the tenants as a leasing agent to eliminate outside storage of any inoperable vehicles, which had been a problem on the property. It allows a contractor that uses a vehicle like Lee Electric to keep it there. Uh, we've done several of the design standards. We agree with all of those. Signage is something that's going to allow us to go to uniform signage above each door. So I appreciate again Ms. Bachelor's guidance through this, and I'm able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Uh, Mr. Fowler, do you have a question for Mr. Barber?
Mr. Barber, when you said uniform signage, um, you know, that's kind of one thing that we've had a little bit of, of difficulty in trying to, you know, make it, and I, I, I think there's a definite need for signage. Um, would there be a problem if there were stipulation put in here for uniformity through your signage above the doors, or, I, I mean?
It would help me, to be quite honest with you.
Okay. Wha- wha- and that's what I'm looking for, some consistency to make that area look, you know, and, and you, you get one guy that does it on a, you know, and, and it's not trying to be derogatory, but he'll put it on a piece of plywood, and another one that'll have a professional sign done, and then it ends up, you know, you're, creates a little bit of a, a challenge for us in other areas trying to, you know, identify and make things a little better, a little more unique and uniform, so.
This isn't in Halton City, but when I started my career, I worked River Bend Business Park. These are some of the similar ownerships. If you're familiar with how we went to uniform signage there, where there were a white plank with a trim with a brown, and it was a smaller deal because we don't want big gaudy signs.
Right.
So that's what we're moving towards, as well as painting the doors and putting lights above the doors. If you guys wanted to, you know, for, for, yeah, if you wanted to stiffen that, make it a certain size that's small, that would help me out, and I could submit that.
What, then, um, without, I guess, uh?
Hopefully without doing it another thirty days, but.
Right, no, but, but what, uh, what was your typical signage in the River Bend area? Because that's do- that's a very professional business development and-
When our owners bought that park, uh, back in ninety-seven, the signs were all over the place, and so, um, I would say that if we use a similar signage here, it would be about, you know, knock, see, above that door, I think our sign dimensions were, you know, roughly twelve inches, so they were skinny and across. And it would be small and uniform above the door if the tenant elected to pay and put that up. It's a certain sign specification that we put into the lease. And again, when the design standards come in through the conditional use permit, it gives me teeth as the new guy in town to say, "Hey, we can't have inoperable vehicles here. We need to have a certain sign." So, yes, sir, willing to do that.
Uh, is it, uh, Ms. Bachelor, would you, do you have a recommended size that would, um, while we're discussing this?
Based on what I see as far as available wall space, I think, uh, twelve by ten, so a hundred and twenty, uh-
Twelve inches high?
He, he mentioned the twelve over at River Bend, and then whatever the width of the garage door is, I think that would be ample signage for the building.
Mr. Barber, is that, is that, what you feel are a bit more excessive than?
And I would even go one further and say the twelve inches high, but we would limit it to eighty percent centered on that door, so it doesn't go left to right on that door. Uh, I believe that those are ten feet wide. I, I believe that they are.
So it'd be eight foot, one foot by eight foot maximum?
I'd be fine with one by six, to be honest with you. Yeah, one by six would be just fine.
Okay. You've helped me, Mr. Barber. Thank you.
You helped me, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Fowler, for the applicant?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, are there any? Uh, Councilmember, none?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I just have a question about this picture right here.
Yes.
Is that facing north, or, I mean, we're looking at that, that's the north end. So, I mean, it looks kind of crummy there, obviously, but it's probably worse, the picture is worse than it is, as far as that parking lot. Is that a parking lot on this end?
Part of, part of what we're doing is a, a facade that meets the masonry standards. That's part of whom we bought the park for that side of the park. Uh, we were going to put a masonry building to fancy up that, you know, to make that corner look a little bit more appealing. Um, that's one of the things Ms. Bachelor and I had talked about as well. Because I believe there is a design standard that requires that for us to, a landscape requirement that requires us to do that.
So, um, Ms. Bachelor, would you kind of define that?
Uh, one of their directives on the exhibit also is to do the fifteen-foot landscaping from the property line, so that's pretty much going to eliminate that area for any parking access. So if they decide to do the whole thing, that's great, but they are required to do the fifteen foot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, none. Are there any other questions or comments, uh, from the council for Mr. Barber or Ms. Bachelor? Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Uh, it was mainly a comment. Mr. Barber, I'd like to thank, um, I hope y'all showing interest in other parts of our community because it's, uh, refreshing to have someone that has some, you know, that brings some detail forward that's a little more restrictive than some of the things that have, you know, get brought before us, whereas typically not to tighten our regulations, but to loosen them, so we do appreciate y'all and, and we hope that there's, you know, I know staff's probably done a very good job taking care of you, and-
They have.
And we want to appreciate, let me tell you how much we appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, sir. Well, with that being said, we are now, uh, this is, okay, uh, we are in line for a motion. Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading, uh, CU dash zero one one dash one seven, also ordinance numbered O, O dash two zero one seven, z- dash zero zero two dash one five, and as well the, to add the two previous modifications or restrictions that have been placed, uh, the recommendations, as well as add a third that there be no signage to exceed a one foot by six foot, uh, dimension above, to be centered above all the overhead doors, uh, and that'd be the allowance on signage.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Dr. Trong, did you understand Mr. Fowler's motion?
Yes, and I am second with the special condition or requirement, whatever.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion for approval in a second. Uh, council, if you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barber. So, moving on to agenda item number four, final plat being P dash O one seven dash one six. Again, Ms. Bachelor.
This is for a final plat of Halton Crossing, block one, lots two, three, and four. Consider action on the application of Al Carmali for approval of a final plat creating lots two, three, four, block one, Halton Crossing, locally known as fifty-twenty, fifty-thirty, and fifty-forty, northeast loop eight twenty. The applicant proposes to create lots two, three, four, of block one, Halton Crossing for two restaurant pad sites, being twenty and thirty, and fifty-forty is a proposed hundred and twenty-five room hotel. On September twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of P zero one seven one six by a vote of four zero. And as I mentioned, um, that's restaurants, pad site, restaurant pad site, hundred and twenty-five room hotel. This is at the New Backage Road and extension of Old Denton Road in Halton and a northeast loop eight twenty access road. And Mr. Carmali's here, if you have any questions of him, and there is a subsequent case for a PD also.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Are there any questions from the council for Ms. Bachelor? Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
I don't have a question for Ms. Bachelor, Mr. Van Nuys. He's on part of the drainage, uh, portion of this. Um, it doesn't require the FEMA, but yet there's a climber that we were working with the, uh, Corps of Engineers on. Do you mind telling me where we're at with that process? It's somewhat correlated to this.
It's, uh, been completed, so we do have the actual letter of map revision in hand. The property that was previously in the floodplain, which hampered development, it is no longer in the floodplain. FEMA's acknowledged it just within the last month, month and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, Dr. Trong?
Ma'am, council, I'm ju- I'm so excited for this one because that piece of land, if we have like a big hotel and two maybe fancy restaurant would be good for our city, and I really happy to see if we, it, it go forward, you know, and I thumb up on the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, um, does anyone have any que- the applicant is here, Mr. Carmali. Uh, Mr. Carmali, do you have anything you'd like to add to Ms. Bachelor's presentation?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, do, in, does anybody on the- Does anybody on the council have questions for, uh, the applicant, Mr. Carmali? Uh, Mr. Fowler?
Oh, I don't, once again, I don't have a question for Mr. Carmali, but I would like to just give a little small tidbit of history on this. This is a property that was worked on with Economic Development Corporation. Uh, in its inception, it didn't require two pad sites, but Mr. Carmali, um, the suggestion was made to potentially add a second pad site. He didn't have to, but he chose to, uh, come back and replat the property and go through the process and which was, you know, I, I feel most beneficial to our community, and I want to thank him for taking the extra steps in doing that, and, and hopefully, uh, you know, it'll, it'll be very productive for him at the end, and we do want to thank you, though, for, for doing this, that, Mr. Carmali.
Absolutely. Went above and beyond what was actually required of him. One, certainly want to thank him for that. Um, well, with that being said, uh, we are in line, uh, for a motion. Uh, Dr. Trong?
Ma'am, council, I go ahead and make a move to approve final plat, P dash zero one seven dash sixteen, uh, on location five zero twenty, five zero thirty, and five zero forty on east loop eight twenty, Halton City access.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Watkins?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval in second. Council, if you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Fantastic. Um, moving on to the corresponding ordinance, uh, ordinance number O dash two oh one seven dash O two five dash one five. Ms. Bachelor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, like we said, this is the first reading of a PD for the property we just mentioned, and this is only for the fifty-forty, which is where the hotel's going to be. Consider action on the application of Al Carmali for a zoning change request from C-two, C-three commercial district to PD planned development for all C-two uses plus hotel excluding extended stay. Use locate on lot two, block one, Halton Crossing, being approximately two point three three nine acres east of Halton Road, north of Northern Cross Boulevard, south of northeast loop eight twenty, and west of Old Denton Road, locally known as fifty-forty northeast loop eight twenty. The applicant requests to rezone the subject site to allow the following use, hotel. On September twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of Z zero one three one six by a vote of four zero. The city's comprehensive land use plan designates the subject site as retail, office, service, commercial, and the proposed zoning change and use is consistent with this land use suggested by the club. If you have any questions, I'm hearing Mr. Carmali's.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bachelor, are there any questions from the council for Ms. Bachelor? Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
No, sir, Mr. Minister for Legal Counsel.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Olson, the, uh, and I understand this is just for, for technical purposes, though the planned development has to be put in place for this, but then this does not uh, changing the stipulations that's made in the agreement between Mr. Carmali and the, and the Economic Development Corporation. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's actually a, a three-way agreement between the city, the EDC, and, and, uh, Halton Hospitality, I think's the name of the entity, but this rezoning does not change that. There are timelines in there that have to be met. And if they're not, then, uh, there are, uh, there are provisions for, uh, for, uh-
Well, I wasn't as concerned about the timelines, but there were requirement on the number of rooms and the things that were part of this, so, this agreement, so I just want to make sure that, you know, and I know that's the case, but I'd rather ask it and make sure from your perspective that there's no, there's no change in stipulation from that.
That, that's correct. This, this, that does nothing to abrogate that agreement. It's still enforceable in, in all terms.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, are there any other questions from the council for either, uh, Ms. Bachelor or Mr. Carmali? Seeing none? Okay. Uh, Mr. Carmali, did you have anything you would like to add on this? No? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, and I'll now open the public hearing at seven forty for anyone in the audience who'd like to speak regarding this agenda item. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty-one, and we are now in line for a motion. Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval on first reading of zoning KZ dash zero one three dash one six, ordinance number zero dash two zero one seven dash zero two five dash one five, first reading.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember, none?
Um, that's for a second.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Dr. Trong and Councilmember Watkins, yours for seconds, okay. Uh, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council, and thank you, Mr. Carmali. Uh, moving on to agenda item number six, final plat being P dash double O two dash one seven, and again, Ms. Bachelor.
There we go. This is for a final plat for twenty-eight twenty-two Beach Street. Consider action on the application of Barry Rolfing for approval of a final plat creating lot one, block one, Dallas Lot and Barricade Edition from tracks nineteen, nineteen B, and nineteen B one, abstract four seventy-two, John W. Ellison survey, located in the M-two heavy industrial district containing approximately four point six eight five acres and locally known as twenty-eight twenty-two North Beach Street. The applicant proposes to create lot one, block one, Dallas Lot and Barricade. A commercial meta- metal building exists on the property. The business is currently in Fort Worth and is relocating to Halton City. On September twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And if you look at the screen here, this is the L-shaped lot that's being created. There is detention for the drainage back here that's gone through engineering. This is the pro- proposed masonry facade for the building. This is the current building. If you, uh, recall, people that've been here a long time, that's the old Bill Hames building that had the carnival equipment stored there. And this is where they're currently located, just north of twenty-eighth street on the Fort Worth side. Um, so they're getting quite a bit more space than what they currently have. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions of myself or the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Are there any questions from the council for Ms. Bachelor or the applicant? Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
I have one question for Ms. Bachelor. The hours of operation for, and I know that backs up to the, the, uh-
Cemetery.
Cemetery, so there's not really anything as far as-
No residential.
Right, that, that we would have to even take into consideration.
Right.
Okay. That was my primary question. Uh, then, is that on the elevation? You may go back to the facade elevation. Is that, eh, eh, front only, or will there, will there be any requirements on the two sides?
Front only.
Okay. Okay, that meets our requirements.
They're not adding on to the building. They're doing a remodel. If it was an addition, then we could make them do the, um, eighty percent.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for, uh, Ms. Bachelor or, okay, uh, Dr. Trong?
Ma'am, uh, this is a front side, right?
Yes, the street side.
Do you have a picture of the backside after remodeling? Or would be the same with all picture?
It'll be the same metal bil- uh, metal siding that's on there currently.
Okay.
The only masonry treatment will be on the front west elevation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you said the applicant is here as well?
Yes.
Okay, we'd certainly like to give you an opportunity if you, uh, have anything you'd like to add to Ms. Bachelor's presentation.
I can answer questions?
If you would just state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Barry Rolfing.
Okay. Uh, any member of the council have a question for the applicant, uh, Mr. Fowler?
Oh, I, I, just for consideration, Mr. Rolfing, I, I, I know y'all have been in that lot for a long time over there, just on the other side of Fort Worth, and we're, like I say, once again, anyone we can get in here, we welcome in, appreciate y'all, you know, considering. I'm sure you're purchasing this property.
It's done purchased.
Done purchased. All right, well, good. Well, we're glad to have you then. You're a captive audience. Uh, would there be any, uh, since, Ms. Bachelor, can you go to the front elevation from the actual? Would there be any possibility- Would there be any possibility of, of maybe considering doing some, you know, maybe wainscoting or just some masonry on the sides?
There is around the, the, uh, south end right there, they are going, what were they going down? Six foot or so, and then the rest of the building is gonna be completely stripped, painted. So i- it will be dressed up. It will, will not look like this right here. This thing hadn't had anything done to it in over fifty years.
Right.
You know, the, the property's been in a Carney family for nearly a hundred years.
Well, and, and, yeah, I just know a lot of times from the street elevation, if you can, you know, if you, if it's, there's a possibility of at least making the turn and-
There-
like you say, going, going back-
There are gonna be s- some windows cut down the side of it, and, uh, for masonry facade's gonna turn the corner a little bit, but we were not going all the way back to the corner.
No, and if you can turn the corner that even, that just makes breaks.
Yeah, it, it is, it is gonna turn the corner and go, I don't remember what it was on the plans, but it, it is going to turn the corner and go four to six foot.
Okay. Okay. And then, like you say-
We're going in, putting a complete new roof on it.
Resheeding it and then, there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, no, I'm sure you'll do a great job. Like I say, we're just, eh, eh, we're tasked with trying to make it look as very good as we can and-
Well, eh, that's what we're trying to do too.
You just, if you mow it, it'll look better, huh?
It's mowed. We've been, we've been running-
Yeah, I, I understand. It's a task. I, I, yeah, it's-
Trying to keep everything going out on the highways and all that and-
Right.
Just-
Keeping you busy, but, but we do-
Finding employees is gonna be, is, uh, the main thing.
Well, I, I can understand that challenge, but like I say, the main thing is we, we just, we welcome in and I do appreciate y'all, you know, coming to our community and, and we want to thank you for that.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember None?
Thank you. Just wondering about what kind of roof you're gonna put on there. Is it gonna be another, uh-
It's, it's gonna be a metal R-panel.
Okay, to match-
Roof. Uh, I think, I think it's, I don't know know if they're going with a galvanized or, uh, a white, but it will be an R-panel roof.
Okay. All right, looks good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council for, uh, Ms. Bachelor or, uh, uh, Mr. Ro- Rolfing?
Rolfing.
Rolfing. Seeing none? Okay, fantastic. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, that being said, we are now in line for a motion. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, did you want to make a motion? Your light's still on.
I didn't realize my light was still on. I can, if someone else isn't in line, I'll make it. It, it's fine.
I don't, I don't see anyone.
Okay. Mayor, move for approval of P dash zero zero two dash one seven, the final plat for Dallas Lot and Barricade, Block One, Lot One.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Uh, Dr. Trong?
I'm second, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval in a second. If you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Fantastic, and welcome to Halton. Uh, moving right along to agenda item number seven, Reserve Officer Appointment. Uh, Chief Phillips, welcome, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, trying to make this quick. This is for a reserve appointment for licensed peace officers for the police department. Um, under the Texas local, local government code, it authorizes home rule city char- or home rule cities to use volunteers to help reestablish and, uh, supplement its regular police force. Halton City Municipal Ordinance establishes a police reserve force for the city. The city's governing body must appoint these volunteers. The reserve police officers will undergo the same training that licensed peace officers go through and maintain the same licensing standards from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Uh, reserve officers, uh, that have submitted will work under the direct supervision of regular police officers and will provide a benefit to the city by helping us with administrative tasks and special projects. Um, the, three individuals were Assistant City Manager Rex Phelps. Um, I won't go through all of his qualifications because they're quite extensive. Um, Rick, Richard Isham, um, another person that's currently employed. He's a public safety project manager. His role is kind of a twofold. This will help him be able to manage some of the CGS requirements, uh, that we have to mandate or mandated by the state to provide in only licensed peace officers can perform some of those tasks. And then William Griffith, which is, you can also see his extensive, uh, law enforcement, uh, expertise, and then he's currently uh, Director of Tarrant County College Police Academy. My main goal for having these three bought on as reserve police officers is we're trying to revamp our, uh, policies and our, um, general orders, and we're going to start trying to head towards a, uh, licensing program tal- called Texas Best Practices. Si- City Manager Phelps was in that process and knows it quite, I guess, good, yeah. Um, and also William Griffith has been a integral part in developing the program and actually instituting in some of the agencies he was at. Um, so with that, uh, like I said, it's fiscal impact. There's very minimal fiscal impact. It's for the basic requirements and training that, you know, the every biannual that we have to go through. Um, we have licensed instructors within the PD that teaches the basic requirements, so the fiscal impact is almost null on not any of that. So, uh, our recommendation's that a resolution authorizing the chief of police to appoint Rex Phelps, Richard Isham, and William Griffith as police officers for the city of Halton City.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief. Uh, are there any questions, uh, for the chief? Uh, Dr. Trong?
You know I will pick on you this one. By the way, who pay for the program? Our city will pay for the candidate or the candidate pay for himself?
There's no cost associated with that. They're all currently-
No cost?
They're, they're all currently licensed police officers.
Oh, current license, they already went through, but, uh-
Yeah, they're all-
They just come here to learn our policy, right?
They're, they're, they're already currently, as you can see in their, um,
And, uh-
Rex Phelps and William Griffith are both ex-police chiefs. They're currently licensed peace officers, and we're gonna use them to help redo our general orders and our standard operating procedures.
Chief, is this the first time our city held reserve officer, or have we been having this, this program before, or no?
We, we've had this program since about two thousand and seven. We've had, usually what happens is, uh, we've had a couple of officers that leave and go to work at, uh, other agencies, and they want to maintain their license. What they do is they come on and they stay as a reserve officer with our department, so they can keep their licensing through that tenure that, wherever they're at. Um, T-CO used to allow you to carry their license and not require a reserve police officer status, but that is, that changed about that timeframe.
I mean, in your plan, how many officer are you looking for?
According to charter, we can't go over ten percent of our authorized force, so I, I would not be able to appoint more than seven.
Okay. Uh, when we have more officer like this, do you need more unit, or you want to double up, you know, officer?
They're not gonna be utilized for pu- police patrols or anything. It's just gonna be administrative and basically that type of operation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Uh, Councilmember None?
Like, realizing it's administrative duties probably only, um, there really, the, there's no liability for the city, is there?
There's always a liability, especially with law enforcement.
Limited?
Uh, depends. I mean, if, if, God forbid, something tragic was happening to Halton City, like back in two thousand and one with the tornadoes or something like that, we would be able to call them to come and help with whatever task we needed at that point, whether it was rehabbing, search and rescue, assisting, you know, certified police officers, paid police officers, so whatever liability, you know, we work with humans, so we can't really predict what they're gonna do.
Okay, so basically you don't tell them, just go and sit in that office and come up with some policies and procedures. It's, there's more to it than that.
There's possibility for it, yeah, depending on what the need arises, but their whole focus on this would be for administrative stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Uh, Ca- uh, Councilmember Grow?
Hey, Chief, uh, this Texas best, um, what is this program? Best practices. Does this getting, 'cause I know way back when Hearst was a credited department-
That's a CLIA, that's a national standard. This one's a Texas Police Chiefs Association that actually has developed model policies and they implement them through the departments throughout the state.
Okay. All right, so, all right, so it's, it's-
It's similar, but it's not, not as stringent. It's basically focused towards Texas and Texas law enforcement agencies.
Sounds good. Thank you.
From there, we could go further though, right? We can do the Texas and then we could do the national. If we have three really good people on there.
The national- Yeah. Na-
Now, looking, looking for the future.
National's extremely-
Cause Halton City on the map.
Expensive, because you gotta have somebody dedic- you had to hire an employee dedicated just to them. And even with the, well, even with this program, it's gonna be, um, time-consuming on the officers that we have to keep up with current legal status and it's, it's gonna be tough. But if y'all approve these three guys, we'll get it done.
I, I think you have three really good guys on there, so you couldn't have asked for much better. Thank you.
So, with any other questions or comments for Chief Phillips? Okay, we are now in line for a motion. Uh, Councilmember Grow?
Mr. Mayor, I, I ask, uh, that we approve, uh, the re- reserve officers' appo- appointments, so we allow Chief Cody Phillips to, uh, approve the three reserve police officers.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have a motion for approval. Uh, Dr. Trong?
I'm second, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Motion for approval in a second. Councilmember None, was that for a second, or do you have a question?
That was for a second also.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a motion for approval in a second. If you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, and thank you, uh, Chief Phillips and to the three applicants. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Fire Marshal Position. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight's staff's asking that you approve a resolution amending the definition of sworn employee to exclude the fire marshal position from the sworn employee definition. As you know, we can utilize section eleven point three six of the charter to do this. It's basically a three-pronged process that involves the approval of the city manager, the approval of the city council, and then a majority of vote of the affected sworn employees, which would be the firefighters.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments from the city council for the city manager, uh, regarding the fire marshal position? Okay, seeing none. We are in line for a mo- uh, motion. Councilmember Grow?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, make a motion that we approve Resolution Romeo dash two zero one seven dash two, oh, correction, two zero one seven dash zero two eight dash zero two, amending the definition of a sworn employee next to exclude a fire marshal.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and Councilmember Watkins?
Second.
We have a motion for approval in a second. Uh, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along to the reg- agenda item number nine, Revision of Ethics Policy. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, Councilmember Grow had asked, um, for a revision of the ethics policy in regard to prohibition of land sales to current or former members of the council and the Halton City Economic Development Corporation and any of their associated business entities within a period of ten years, so I'll let Councilmember Grow follow up on that.
Um, I just thought this might be a good idea to alleviate citizens' concerns about the amount of property that we have and who can purchase it, and so, um, I came up with ten years because that's the amount of time that somebody that gets elected to the council can remain on the dais, so they could do three terms as a council member, and then two terms as a mayor, or vice versa, or some combination of that. That's just my individual thought process. If anybody has any idea, um, I would love to hear.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Grow. Uh, Dr. Trong?
Ma'am, I think this, uh, uh, pretty good, uh, policy, but with one exception. I think ten years leave it too long. I refer like five would be good, because, you know, ten years, that's a long time, especially for my age. If you want to buy another land, I don't think I have that chance, so eh, eh, if we can cut down five would be good, you know? That's my comment.
Okay, but for the most part, you're in agreement that the ethics policy should be, should be strengthened?
Yeah, because it, eh, eh, yes, yes, ma'am, well, it don't look good if we are currently a city council or mayor and we try to take events, or maybe we are not take events, but we go out there and buy some EDC land and the public will look at us and say, hey, they know everything, information inside of them. I don't think it's look, eh, you know, eh, eh, that's my personal comment, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let's see here. Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have no problem with, you know, objection to any ethics policies. Uh, one, couple of things I do have, though, is we had talked about some considerations of reorganization of the Economic Development Corporation and the necessity to carry forward. That's been brought up two or three times. Has this policy been given to the other members of the Economic Development Corporation that are not on the city council?
Uh, I don't know. That's a good question. Had this been provided to them, I think the, uh, intent was for the council to approve it, and then, you know, obviously whoever's, the citizen members on the EDC, they can accept it, or if not, then we'll have to look for new members, but, Mr. City Manager, would you want to address that?
It has not been perma- pre- presented to the EDC.
Okay. I wouldn't suspect that they would have any problem with it, though.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be a bit premature, though, to vote on an ethics policy and not even have given the members of the, that would, this would affect, or, or potentially affect? Um, I mean, don't, I just think out of courtesy and consideration, I think they should at least be given a, an opportunity to look at this before it, council goes and says, here's the deal, here's what we're having. I mean, I, you know, if I was, of course, I serve on that, and I, I mean, I, I got the packet as a, as both a council member and an EDC member, but you know, it's kind of a, uh, in my, my opinion, it's a slap in the face, or, you know, it's slight to those that are on the board that, you know, something that could affect them potentially, especially when it deals with ethics, to not even give them the opportunity to review this policy or policy revision before it takes place. Uh, that's my opinion. I, I don't know that, it may be premature, like I say, I mean, there's potentially, you know, we, we discussed some changes in the way the Economic Development Corporation's, Councilmember Grow and I have, you know, somewhat in agreement on, on part of that, uh, eh, it may, maybe premature in the fact that we might not even potentially have an economic development commission, so, you know, I, I don't know that, I just don't know that we have to take this into consideration tonight. I think we should at least get it to the board members first. There's a meeting, is there not, Thursday? This, this week, three nights from now, so, you know, it might, y'all might consider putting it on the next agenda, or, 'cause I think we had talked about looking at some changes in, or potential changes in the way that the, uh, kind of the whole makeup of the organization is. Uh, you know, it might not even be in place in a month. So, that's just, that's just my thought.
Okay, so. Councilmember, uh, None?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I agree. I think this is too, uh, premature to put this out right now. Um, I think we need to again, present it before EDC, um, and see, get their opinion on it. Um, I totally think ten years is too long. I mean, I don't agree with it personally at all. Um, I definitely agree with ethics. Um, however, to me, it's just too premature, so I, I would want to at least put it before the EDC, and then we can come back, get their, get their comments, come back and look at it again. Maybe change some wording, maybe change a few things.
Uh, Dr. Trong, did you want to respond, or do you have?
Uh, eh, eh, I think this is a very sensitive, you know, uh, policy, and I would like to have a joint meeting with EDC and discuss about this, and after that, we, eh, we'll make decisions and see what happens, because, you know, uh, I know we have both side, but like, Mr. Grow want ten years, but myself, I want five ye- you know, ten years too long. Thank you. We need to have a joint meeting.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and Councilmember Watkins?
Yes, I agree that it's way premature. As, as I stated, uh, a while ago, when y'all weren't listening, at my age and my, uh, desires of what to do with the rest of my life, I don't know what I'm, I'm gonna do when I grow up, but what it's not gonna be is invest in some property whether the EDC owns it or anybody else. I think- but what it's not gonna be is invest in some property whether the EDC owns it or anybody else. I think there's a whole lot. If I, I'll start to say if I was a betting man, I am a betting man, but this is not something I'm gonna bet on. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that as far as I'm concerned, there won't be any EDC, uh, as it, particularly as it sits today, and there won't be any property to deal with, uh, uh, after, say, two years. I think two or three years would be a long time for us to, the things we've got in place and the people we've got looking at our property and the things that we're trying to decide to do with our property, uh, would not work under those circumstances. So, I, I believe it needs to be tabled at the least, and I don't know that, I, I don't, I don't disagree with having a joint meeting with the, uh, with the EDC, uh, but I think this is, this is, uh, throwing out the baby with the bathwater. I don't, I just, I don't, I don't see it. This should've been set up maybe five years ago. This should've been set up a long time ago if it was gonna be set up, but, uh, I just don't believe you can go out there and... With the things that, with, with the things we have in the works, and, and, and one of the things that comes to my mind that I'm not necessarily far is the, uh, is the fire police, uh, municipal buildings up on our, on the property the EDC owns across the library. You, you go into a whole, you get into a whole different ballgame when you start putting things under the auspices of the city where all of a sudden you gotta put everything out for bid, and never mind the fact, never mind the fact that you, uh, probably lose money on doing that. The, the other end of it is, is it, it, it spreads it out, and, and I'd, I'd like to at le- at least live long enough to see them do a few shovels full of dirt someplace, and besides on me.
So, the, the way that it's worded, the revision of the ethics policy, the way it's worded on our agenda, consideration and our action to approve the ordinance number, amending the ethics policy in regard to prohibition of land sales to current or former members of the city council and the Halton City Economic Development Corp- Corporation and any of their associated business entities within a period of ten years. So, that's what the question is tonight. Are you in favor of or against, and we'll take a vote here in a moment, the revision of this ethics policy? So, are there any other questions or comments regarding this? Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Yes, it stands. Recommendation, stout recommendation, discussion, consideration, and our action by city councilman. And I'm for further discussion.
Okay, that's fine. We're gonna have a vote here in just a moment. Uh, Councilmember Grow?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm, if, if, it sounds like a, a bunch of councilmen, I'm not gonna say majority because I can't read your mo- all of your minds, but, um, I'm all for, if we need to table this thing until the next council meeting, until, uh, the EDC meets next Thursday, and if they wanna put this on, now, the question is, can they put this on their agenda?
That's, that's the only thing I wanted to say, is you guys, uh, consider this. That, that agenda's been posted.
Okay, so that...
That'd have to be the next one. But if you're talking about a joint meeting or something like that, then you couldn't do it Thursday anyway.
Okay, so, until the EDC can legally see it, um, and then I would say I'm fine with it.
Certainly. We'll have a joint meeting with them. Uh, Count, who is next? Councilmember Fowler or Brown? I can't tell. Well, uh, Councilmember Brown, did you have another question or, no? Okay, uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Yeah, um, I think we can get to, I think we can make some headway in this, um, if we were potentially able, and typically this is a slower time of the season or the, or the year for us. When can we set up a meeting between, a joint meeting between the EDC and the, and the council? Let's just schedule that. A way, we can get to the bottom of a bunch of this and get it figured out, 'cause...
Okay, you might come up here, X.
Third Thursday of every month, uh, that's the normal...
Unless needed.
But you can call a special meeting anytime.
And, and I guess that's my question, then. I, I think this would, would fall under the special meeting, 'cause I don't know that there's anything else that would need to be discussed, then, other than, you know, what, where, direction we're gonna go with Economic Development Corporation and, you know, the legalities of it, and the, you know, the either, you know, to continue forward, the, the move forward, or the abolishment, you know, I, I think that's enough on an agenda to...
I would think so.
Um, so, when, when can we have a meeting, Mr. Mayor, that, that's suitable for?
Well, as soon, I mean, TML's next Municipal League's next week. I won't be going, but I think several of our councilmembers are, so as soon as we can schedule it af- you know, the week after, I would suspect, or as soon as everybody's...
I would like to have a date set tonight, just so that we can, you know, get, put this stuff to bed.
Okay, absolutely. I mean... So, how about anywhere from, what is the Oc- week of October eleventh through the twelfth? Eleventh, twelfth, ele- tenth, eleventh, or twelfth? That's a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, Oc- of October, ten, eleven, or twelve?
Should, should we, uh, would it make sense to take those three dates and then allow Mr. Camacho or Mr. Phelps tomorrow or, or Thursday at the meeting to see when the other members of the, 'cause I feel like everybody needs to be there.
Oh, I agree.
We need to make a decision one way or another.
And I was just trying to get...
I mean, I agree with those three dates. I'm saying would have those three options, see which one works between the council and the, and the economic development members that are citizen members, and then make a decision, 'cause that would give us enough time to post.
Art and I will, will work with both groups to come up with a date, between the council and...
Or the, what'd you say, the tenth, eleventh, or twelfth? That's Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
Of October. It's the second week of October.
And then that way...
But we can talk with them.
Well, we can talk with the EDC members and...
We'll, we'll have, we'll have a date. And then could we also ask staff, could y'all, or, or I guess, Mr. Mayor, staff, or, or myself, whoever needs to ask that, uh, legal counsel, update yourself on everything we need to do about potential abolishment, or, you know, uh, the, some of the questions that we had asked?
I'd be glad to discuss that with, uh, EDC and council at that joint meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody good on that? Alright. So, what we need now is a motion, if that's what you're wanting to do, uh, to table this Agenda Item Number Nine, if that's what y'all are wanting to do. Uh, Councilmember Grow?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion to table this until the, whenever date is determined for the joint EDC city council meeting, or, and the meeting following that one.
Council, it'll be the second council meeting in, uh, October.
Oh, the ordinance, sure. Well, um, number nine. Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we table this to the meeting after the joint EDC city council meeting regarding ordinance number Oscar dash two zero one seven dash zero two six dash zero one.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for tabling. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Watkins?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Watkins. Councilmember None, was that for a second?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, if you, everybody would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, moving right along to our, uh, Visitors and Citizens Forum. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Ten. We had no resignations. Now on to appointments, so, Councilmember None?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to reappoint Watkins to the, um, Animal Advisory Board as the liaison, council liaison.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council, if you would, please signify ratification with your votes. Five with one abstention. Are there any other...? Okay, well, I've got some appointments. Uh, I'll start with the Animal Advisory Committee. Uh, let's see, we have, this is a reappointment of the current members. Mary Lee Wells, Dr. Anderson, Marion Hilliard, of course, Bob Watkins has already been appointed as the council contact. And a new appointment to be considered for daily operations, uh, member Kevin Cleveland. Uh, then I have some others after this, but if you would, council, please, uh, ratify with your votes. Thank you. Motion passes. Uh, Councilmember None, did you have a question? Oh, okay, no problem. Uh, Councilmember Watkins, did you have a question? Oh, okay. Uh, so, I have another appointment, uh, let's see, to the Housing Authority. This, these are reappointments. Uh, the Housing Committee, uh, Letitia Aguilar, Sandra Torque, Don Leemaster, Willis Nelson. That leaves us with one vacancy, but I hope to have that one filled at the next council meeting. And if you would, please, uh, ratify those with your votes. Motion passes. Thank you. Are there, are there any other appointments or reappointments? Seeing none, we will now, everybody is here, so there's no absences to, excuse me, now adjourn at eight fifteen.